Good afternoon, everybody. It is Monday, November first, 2021, 4:00 P.M. And I will call to order the Free Town Board Selecting Meeting. We will be going to Executive Session and then returning back into Open Session. We are going into Executive Session for the following reasons. Master General Law, Chapter thirty-eight, Section twenty-one, A three, to discuss strategy with respect to litigation. If an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the litigating position of the public body, and the chair so declares. Excel Recycling LLC versus Town of Free Town. Two, to consider the purchase exchange lease or value of real estate. Chair so declares that the open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the negotiating position of the public body. And finally, Master General Law, Section thirty-eight, uh, sorry, Chapter thirty-eight, Section twenty-one, A three, to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel, or to conduct public bargaining session or contract negotiations with non-union personnel, executive assistant. Okay, so with that, I'll entertain a motion to go into Executive Session.
Motion made.
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Selectman Burnwell?
Yes.
Selectman Zager?
Yes.
Selectman Matthews?
Yes. So we are now back from Executive Session in recess. Next on the agenda, we have the public hearing around the transfer station hours. So I will open up the public hearing. I'm gonna lay some ground rules down, just so we can make this a productive conversation. If anyone's going to speak, I ask that you please come up into this front chair right here. Therefore, the, uh, we can pick everything up on the camera, the microphone. Also, I'm gonna limit every individual to three minutes, so we can make sure everyone gets their voice heard. And I guess that's about it. So, I guess a little background here. Currently, the, um, the hours of transfer station were not open on Sunday. So that's obviously led to, you know, different opinions around that. So we're here just to listen to everyone's, you know, input and help us make an informed decision going forward. So with that, if anyone wants to speak, you know, first come, first served. You can come and, and give us your two cents. Yeah, sorry, that's one thing. Please state your name, just for the record. Thank you.
Good time. Just considered, Figgy would ask the Free Town residents, maybe a survey, what would they like before you up and change the hours altogether? Which would be kinda the smart way of doing things. Even though at a five o'clock being today, it's kinda early, I figure you might have it a little later? Just because of people getting out of work, and getting out of work early doesn't have to come to this meeting, which they would like to attend. Some of my neighbors, so I asked them, "What do you think about the transfer station being closed?" Oh, they don't like it. I mean, I don't see a lot of them here today, but I'm here. But in general, you should ask people's opinion before you change the hours. For four to a four-day week, now you're working, they're doing a five-day week, not open on a Sunday. So now let down spending more money on that, correct? Going from a four-day week to a five-day week now, because of the current hours, so.
Yeah, one issue with surveys, just to mention that, is it's hard to get a fair kinda indication of what people actually think. When those, you, you tend to only get the people who really are passionate about it. So it's, we've had trouble in the past, just actually getting like really, you know, accurate feedback during their surveys. I think, I agree, I think there's ways we can go about it. Maybe doing a poll at like, at town meeting? You know, that's something we've talked about, or, you know, if you just do something online, right? Then you leave out everybody who's not active on, on the computer.
Yeah, I understand. Take a survey at the transfer station, you know, before you even change the hours, you know what I mean?
That's a good idea.
Maybe somebody's a heads up, you know what I mean?
Yep, that makes sense.
So if they're not aware, you know, if they're not online, unless they have a sign ahead of time, okay, we're gonna be changing the hours. This is what it's gonna be. A good heads up would be very, very good. But what I understand, people have more time. I understand the attenders don't wanna work on a Sunday. I can, I can, I can feel that, I understand. But if they could alternate, have you know, rotate it around, you know what I mean? So it's kinda, that's my opinion, you know what I mean? But it's busier on a Sunday than it'll be on a come Tuesday, Tuesday through Saturday.
Yep.
You really look at the numbers.
Yeah, that's one of the problems, I, I'm gonna try to get numbers, right? I think it's something we need to work on, is to have the, the data there, so to back up any kind of decisions going forward. I think somewhere that we made a mistake before we made a decision is if we actually had all the data, that would, you know, we'd have, we'd come in from a stronger place with our decision.
Especially if you had like a budget meeting or another, a bigger turnout for a meeting, you know, a big turnout here. Most of meetings, you don't have a great turnout, so maybe for a budget meeting, maybe you get a hundred people, under five. That's pretty much it. You could just say, offhand, this is not a vote, it's just, just ask somebody a question, like, "What do you do right now?" It's like, "What do you think about the transfer station being closed Sundays?" Just ask the people freewillly, you know? Not a vote, it's just to see, gather information.
Yeah, I'd like to see a survey, to tell you the truth.
Uh, yeah, I, I think we can do a survey, I think we can do a poll. I mean, I think there's a couple of different ways we can approach this, maybe all of them, to get a good sense, you know? So that's something, definitely some feedback.
As so that we get as many opinions as possible.
Yep, that makes sense to me. Alright.
Correct. Most people have more free time on the weekends, you know what I mean?
I hear you.
Sometimes you clean up on Saturday, you bring it on the Sunday morning.
Yep. Alright, thank you.
You're welcome.
Hi, Patty Chase from New Circle. You pretty much hit upon most of the questions. There's a lot of rumors that have gone around with the transfer station. And at one point, I guess Vicki didn't have help there, which she couldn't get time off or vacations. We absolutely understand that. It's by understanding that they have hired someone new full-time.
We have, yep.
Correct? Is it just one or two?
We have a per diem person as well.
So you have a full-timer and a per diem?
Correct.
So I guess that's the question, like, why couldn't someone else do a Sunday, or a night hour, or something, to help the residents as well? Unfortunately, we can never get there without time saving, like he just said, it's five o'clock. I've gotta work early to get here for the meeting. So that, I thought was a little unfair to the town. How did this happen? Like, how, how did the, the hours get changed anyway, and why?
So the, originally, I mean, it was a kind of a negotiation, Vicki might be able to speak this later on, but it was a negotiation between our former town administrator, was working with, you know, staff over there, and this was the agreement that they came to. I think part of it was to, you know, keep, as a retention, to keep them there, so they didn't go and find other employment. You know, kinda how to work with them. Obviously, I don't think anyone wants to work on Sunday, I get that, so then that's how we got to this place.
So to that point, there was a job posting for that job. It clearly stated Wednesday through Sunday.
Yep.
So when, how many people applied for the job, and weren't they aware it was Wednesday through Sunday?
Yeah, I, I don't have the, uh, those, how many people applied for it, I'm not, I don't think, I'm not sure.
They clearly stated Wednesday through Sunday, so I mean...
Yep. No, I hear you.
And the people who took the job knew that that was the schedule.
That was the schedule.
Three applicants?
So again, how did it get changed?
That, that's, Trevor just spoke for that.
Between the administrator?
The former town administrator and Vicki.
Because if I hadn't heard of this earlier, I, I would've been here earlier too, just to state, I mean, Vicki, you know where they are, where they are on spring and fall cleanups. I can't get there anymore. I don't have it back yet, I put my stuff in, like, I need to get there.
Yep.
So I, I don't know what else, I don't know what else to say, other than it's nothing against there, but it doesn't work.
Understood.
And, you know, one of the things, I think, you know, I had, we spoke about this in the past, um, you know, we, one of the things I had thought about too, was even doing an evening hour or something, right? To try and help other people. So I, I don't know, I mean, that's something that we have to talk about, but...
So is it not gonna happen this year? Like, we just had this, this damage everywhere, is this not gonna happen?
So, I mean, I don't think it's gonna happen in, right now. I think that we'd have to potentially find a, uh, another employee to come in or change the hours.
Where's the per diem person? They can't do a Sunday even for a few hours?
I, I'd have to speak to, I haven't spoken to them specifically on this yet.
Is there a place we can just dump the stuff, and then it can be taken care of later, like?
Not that I'm aware of, but I will, uh, I mean, I will look into these, this, and see if I can get the per diem person to work on Sunday. I mean, that, that seems like an obvious, an obvious and, you know, short-term fix to this. I, I just, I can't promise that's gonna happen right now.
Can we hear from the transfer station as to what the issues are?
What?
Could you explain to us what's going on and how it works, and so that everybody understands the hours?
From Tuesday till Saturday, we're not open on Sundays anymore. Okay. On, we never were open on Monday.
Okay.
No. The schedule was split. They asked us which day was more profitable. Saturday was more profitable than a Sunday.
All year long?
All year long. I'm there, I've been there seventeen years.
I'm just saying, yeah, all the...
Alright, folks, folks.
Yep.
No, what I'm saying, so during spring and fall cleanups, you're not gonna, those Sundays weren't busy?
Those, uh...
Excuse me. So for the camera to pick things up, and just for this to be a productive conversation, we have to have some order here.
That's, and that's where we were, it was the other town administrator, he had asked myself, I believe Tim McIntosh was in the room. You were there too, Trevor?
Yep.
And we had all agreed that it would be the Saturday that we would keep. It is an adjustment, just like anything else, and something new, it's an adjustment.
And one thing I'd like to, you know, I, I asked Luanne today to pull together our neighboring communities, to see how they do it, to make sure we know we're not way, way out of whack.
First, it's, it's closed on Sundays. Paul River, Lakewood, Berkeley, Middleboro, Weyton, uh, I hope this guy's looking at you. All closed on Sundays.
Rochester, yep.
Yes.
So just...
Patty Chase again. So I did my homework as well. Westport is open on Sundays. Berkeley's open until six-thirty one night, Lakewood's open until seven-forty-five one night.
But they're not open on Sundays.
Nope, they're not, but at least they have hours that people can get there.
That's right, and I had proposed that to them, to the board, to be open later.
Okay.
And, and just to be clear, we're not shutting the door on any kind of solution here, right? Like, we, we tried this out, it's been four months now. We're, we're, you know, we're always learning and adjusting.
After spring cleanup, so then it gets quiet, I'm sure, and then fall comes along.
Yeah, I mean, I can see that, that's what you're saying, yep. Just saying, you know, there's, there's not gonna be any particular hours that has worked for every single person. We're trying to do as much as we can for as many people as we can, just to wanna make that sound...
For the town people, right?
Of course. So, so, you know, this is a, we're learning, we're gonna figure this out, right?
Is it gonna be too late for this year?
So I, I mean, I can't open, I can't have it open on Sunday if I don't have anyone to work it. And if, if we open it Sunday and say, Vicki doesn't want, can't do that, and we can't get the per diem person there, I mean, I can't, I mean, what am I supposed to do, right? So that's, that's a situation I can find myself in, right? But I'm not to say I'm gonna work on this, I'm gonna try to get, see if we can have someone open there, be there on Sunday. That's obviously a great solution.
Or a night, something, just...
Yeah. I hear you. We'll, we'll work that out. But this is a public hearing, just to hear everyone's opinion, right?
I, I just wish it had been better, like you said, five o'clock, and, and if it had happened way back when, in June, when all this started, more people would've maybe gave their opinions back then, so we would've had it for the fall.
Understood.
Not to hog, not to hog up too much time, but I'm saying, obviously, this should've been done. People should've been informed early before even the change happened, you know what I mean? I was wrong for changing the hours, you know what I mean? Don't give anybody a heads up or any input like that. For an example, this past July, they had to stop the, grant the yard waste, weren't able to dump there for more or less for like two weeks. I guess we're chipping up the brush pile?
Yep.
For the contract. I'm saying, you could continue dumping there, what's the big deal? Common sense would tell you that you can still go there, dump it, dump it in a different section. I understand the guy bid on a certain pile, an X amount of dollars, to chip it up. At least you could do is put another pile there, just to keep the people happy. Instead of two weeks, you can't dump nothing there. At least you put a sign up there ahead of time, but a bit better off, you just put it aside, or say, uh, whatever the price is, I want the, the residents to continue using it, so you'll see, the contractor charged you a hundred fifty dollars more. But it keeps things, keeps things flowing along, instead of, hey, stop for two weeks, and you can't do nothing.
And there's plenty of room there, it's not like...
Yeah, I understand, you can put a pile there and push it, push it somewhere else.
Was that?
At the time, there wasn't plenty of room, we inundated the compost. The brush pile was a three-year, a three-year pile. The contractor that was doing the chipping asked that nobody be there near the machine for dirty reasons.
I understand that part of their mission, he's, I'm sure he's a...
Well, either way, I mean, do you ever have something come flying at you when it's going into a brand?
No, I'm saying, is you have to keep the, the site safe, it's a safe condition for people to dump stuff, I'm saying. There should be enough room that, you know, I can't wait till the pile, the pile gets way out of control, then you can't have enough room to take care of the situation. This way, people won't be destructive, you know what I mean? It's like when you build this new police station, it was still operating the other one. You're not gonna shut one down so you can build another one, I, you still need police, so. Just to keep people happy, you know what I mean? You ask, if you ask the people what they want, that's, that's the main concern. Just don't look back what you wanna do. The heads up, that, that was, that was wrong in my opinion.
Yeah, no, I agree with you.
I mean, you got the website, you could put stuff out there all day long, and nobody did, so. And these are, you see, you know, Selectman, this is your job, you got the administrator, this is what your tax dollars pay for, so.
Yeah, anybody else? Questions, comments? So, no one else has anything else? I mean, obviously, I think that there's some fair points. I wish this was brought up to a, a public hearing before the original hours were changed. I mean, I think it's a fair criticism, it should've been communicated better. I think we, we did post, you know, the hours were changing after that decision was made, and it was, um, you know, on the force Selectman agenda, that, that, that was a topic to be discussed back that, you know, at that point. But I agree, like, you know, people are not, you know, looking through that on a weekly or daily basis, right? So that's a very fair criticism. Yep.
So, Rose, Winfield Street? I would suggest, or, um, the idea of extending the hours later at night, I think that's a huge liability to the town, 'cause it's gonna be dock starting next week at four o'clock or five o'clock.
Yeah.
And if you're gonna ask people to go in there and dump brush in the dock, I think that's a huge liability to the town. I don't think it's, it's worth the, the problems we're gonna have if somebody gets hurt, a run over. As for the change in, in time and dates, everybody wants their time off, everybody wants their Sunday off. You know, you make arrangements, you do the best you can. As, as for having a place to, I mean, I think it's fantastic we have a place to get rid of brush. Does it work for everybody? No. But you do the best you can, you do the majority. I would caution you that, that if you put something up and looking for, um, a poll from the town, at least make it so people have to sign their name to it, so you don't get a rash of the same person giving the same comment thirty, or forty, or a hundred times.
Yeah, that's what I was mentioning, that's one of the issues we have, is just polling in general, right? In surveys, like, it seem, seems like a very obvious, easy solution, but when you start thinking about it, you know, they can be swayed one way or the other.
So I would suggest doing it at the town meeting, whether you're there and you vote?
Yep.
And it's done by individual vote, and you, that you can count, as opposed to just...
Or the election, it could be a question, I think, as an election.
Absolutely.
Something of that nature, I think, you know, makes sense, yeah.
As, as for the time of the, you know, the workers, that's, their job application is a fluid application. They're not bound. You change to Tuesday through Saturday, the, the person who got hired for Sunday didn't lose their job.
Yep.
Their job didn't go away, it was just the hours were changed.
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Jim Soares Spence Way. I'm gonna preface my statements by saying I'm a twenty-five-year union employee. Anybody that has any familiarity with unions, so there's a work-life-family balance. I'm not gonna lie to you guys, I was upset when I heard that the transfer station was gonna close on Sundays. I win all the time on Sundays. About three minutes later, I scratched my head and I said, "Nah, that's just not right." They need time off too, they do. And I would love for you guys to somehow figure out a way to have somebody there on Sundays, but if you can't figure it out, I'm okay with it. You make arrangements. Good Saturday. In the summertime, when the daylight's up, that goldfill statement, extend the hours. But I agree, I don't think we want people backing trailers up in the dock. That, that sounds, I think that's, that's a recipe for disaster. But, you know, you gotta think of the people that work for you. In, in America today, we've forgotten about employees. You gotta think about the people who take care of you. You gotta, but that's all I got for you guys, and I hope you take that. Thank you.
Alright.
Have a good night.
Appreciate it, thank you.
Hi, guys. Sup, Wagner? Adrian at movies Free Town. I feel that there's a lot of controversy on this, we obviously already know this. There's a lot of people that are affected by this on Sundays. Tuesday through Saturday, it seems very, very, um, I'm trying to think of the word, but I can't even think of it right now. Very good, considering other towns around us, surrounding towns, are only open two days a week. Sometimes they're, they're only Saturday and Wednesday for Berkeley, say, um, and they stay open, I think it's Wednesday or Thursday, they stay open late. So you only got two days, compared to you have a full-time service, a full-week service. And in reality, could someone try to figure something out? Yeah, there, there, yeah, we could definitely try to do better as, you know, chairman and all that, of, of letting people know, maybe. You know, but, um, you guys have obviously a big job. This ain't your only job. And yet again, I think a lot of the town people forget that, and don't take that as consideration. The woman behind us that runs the transfer station does more for this town than, jeez, a lot of people, a lot of people, okay? And there's a lot to say, if you guys would, I'm not saying that she would leave or anything like that, so, but if you lost that, that woman, trying to replace that woman, and then never mind telling someone that she has, they, they have to work on a Sunday? Believe me, um, that would be hard to find. Not only that, I feel that she deserves it after fifteen years, to have Sundays and be, be able to enjoy family, family time, just as all of us love to. The town employees, the only ones that don't, that don't receive, I mean, other than snow, who, who else doesn't? Other than fire when you know you, for fact that you signed up firing employees?
Yeah.
You know? The poor lady's been, what, two years, three years, without a constant employee to help her? She's finally has an employee, and I don't know if any of you have been down to the transfer station? The transfer station is amazing with the extra help.
Never looked better.
Never, ever looked better. I can't bel, uh, believe, I've been there, since I've been going there, since I was five years old. And how it's changed, just in a short period of time, about having a good person there to work and actually be able to do their job? Moving it to forty hours a week for a second employee was the best thing I feel that you guys on, on the desk have done. You guys have done a great job making it two people there, forty hours a week. Life stakes, I feel. Life stakes, and then you get old, okay? If you can't deal with get, not getting there on Sundays, guess what? There's plenty of people in the com, or community that would gladly help you out. Get ahold of them, local businesses, anything like that, so, they'll gladly give you a hand. Yeah, I understand, yeah, it might cost you a little here and there, but at the same time, you know, we can always go into different details, tell, you know, that the town should be open on Fridays, full, full-time on Fridays. The town, uh, um...
Town Hall.
Town Hall should be open on Fridays, 'cause a lot of people get Fridays off. A lot of people work Sunday through Thursday, and the only time they have is that. But we don't, we're not here for that, we're not here to, you know, everyone's upset about Sundays, but you know, it could be a lot worse. We could have just part-timers, could have people that are running, that are at the town bond, running that, running two days a week.
Alright, Seth, thank you, appreciate it.
Nope, I appreciate it, I just wanted to, I just wanted to base my thoughts.
No, I hear you.
And that's...
Alright. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
My family did, full-time. Aunt Kristen's been there too.
Jeff, just for advisement and suggestion only, if you're gonna be open on Saturday, maybe we can open it up from eight to maybe ten hours.
Sorry, Sunday, you mean?
Yeah, instead of Sunday.
Okay.
So Saturday, make it a long day, and maybe late hours during the summer hours on.
Yep. No, I think, I think seasonal kind of approach is something we definitely should look at. You know, you know, if we have the sunlight to operate later on certain days, and that makes a lot of sense, you know? Just kind of, just trying to, you know, think about what makes the most sense for everybody, you know?
That's it, only for advisement and suggestion.
I appreciate it, thank you, I very appreciate it. Alright, one more?
Evelyn Adams. I'm also a Free, a Stonetown resident, and I own property in town, and I also clean my yard, and I can get there on a Saturday without a problem. And people that do work during the week, they may have a day off during the week where the transfer station is open. So for one day a week off, you got the weekend Saturday that you can devote to bringing whatever you have to the transfer station. That's just my opinion.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Come on, Connor. Most people work Monday through Friday, generally, so basically, people clean up Saturday, Sunday, just to get my name. It's, people do need their time off. You say you have three people working there, you can't rotate around, so basically, you be working one weekend a month, and a Sunday, so it's not... Everybody needs their time off, I understand that. I'm not saying two people have to be there, it's just, you know, you can get straightened out if it's kinda messy on a Sunday, you can straighten out on Tuesday, I'm sure. Tuesday's not a busy day, people do need their time off, but you got three people, so basically, kinda look at that, look at it that way, so.
Yep, not shut the door, any kind of options, you know?
You wanna answer that? You don't wanna address that?
So, everyone all set now? Is there any other comments? Alright, so with that, so we're, we're gonna, you have Seth?
Good question. How many completes have there been towards this? Is there a number?
I don't have a number specifically, I mean...
It's been very few.
Yeah.
I would say under five.
Under five?
Yeah.
What we're having a town meeting for under five people?
Well, they're town residents, so...
Yeah, no, I understand, I'm just understa, I was just, I was just curious, you know?
Yeah.
For voting purposes and to keep you...
Yep.
You know, and, and I don't, I guess to the point before Seth is that, certain times, people aren't vocal, right? They can feel a certain way but not say something, neither direction. So it's tough for us to gauge based on that, because certain people will never send an email or call, but it, or then they're upset. Or they might send one, we got one that says they're happy with the hours, we got one that says they're unhappy with the hours. So you know, really, no, so it's tough to gauge.
Yeah.
And that's exactly why I'm here, because I wanted...
Yeah, no, and that's why we appreciate it, that's why we're doing...
And I think that, like, we made the error last time of not having a public hearing of this nature before we made the original change. We're not gonna go and make that same mistake again, and, and, and just change it back without getting, you know, more input. So I think that's why we're having this meeting now. You know, and, and this is one of those, you know, areas that does touch almost everyone who lives in town, right? So it isn't a boring thing, I think it was, the decision was made lightly, too lightly last time, so we're trying to have more input this time.
It does take quite a bit of effort, you know, to go to all of these, and suffice you out a meeting on this, to be frank with you. But in general, if, if you really want some accurate information, it's like, you yourself, okay, you want some information? Go to a certain neighborhood, you could walk around, get some numbers, just quick, boom, boom, you hear? Go do it, go, go to Free Town, go to Stonetown, a couple different neighborhoods that are, you know, tightly close together, ask them a, you know, ask them a question. You like to prefer the transfer station, maybe they use it, maybe they don't. They do have some accurate numbers, you know? Otherwise, if people ain't gonna spend the time and put their input, or, or, a lot of people don't even go to vote. Look at the low turnout you have. Doesn't mean people are for or against it, but I'm just saying in general.
Yeah, I hear you.
I have one thing completely off the record. After the amount of people I saw work with this door after five o'clock, maybe we could reconsider what time we have these hearings?
Yeah.
Please?
Yeah.
That's what I mean, I'm saying, if you had a budget meeting, you wouldn't never have it at five o'clock, it'd be six-thirty, seven.
So I can speak to, I mean, so, there's a couple, so we have, a lot of times, it's folks who work in, work for town, who have to be present at these meetings to speak to something, you know, they're a department head. So if we have it then after their work hours, right? Then that costs, ends up costing the town more money, and, you know, so it's trying to meet, have the, you know, what... you know, the, the time that works best for the public to come and also for town employees to be here and trying to kind of work around that.
Every meeting costs the town money regardless.
Yeah, yeah, but it's trying to find that balance, right?
But I think maybe, maybe you're onto something when we're doing, you know, something with a little bit more substance like this, maybe we try to do it a little bit later. But then our normal meetings, I can tell you, we usually don't even have a single person who shows up, oh, one, you know, so it's like it.
Unless, unless they're required to come, then those are the folks that come, so, it's great to have this kind of turnout, to be honest, it's refreshing.
We're happy to have people.
Sam, you get a bigger turnout, so you get a twenty-five, so every time you show up, you get a twenty-five dollar voucher to take off your taxes.
Free, free beer, we give you free beer. Alright, so we're not going to make a decision on this right now, um, I think I'm gonna continue the hearing until March seventh, twenty twenty-two at six P M. Does that work for everybody? Uh, and then I'll be able to do some more fact-finding between now and then, uh, you know, hopefully we'll have to do some polling, some surveying, try to come up. So I'll, I'll speak with the, uh, you know, see if we can actually get individuals that, um, you know, that work there, work with them and, you know, that, you know, the one's actually there every day, so hopefully, uh, we can figure something out that helps the town.
What's the date?
March, March seventh.
March seventh at twenty twenty-two at six P M, is when I'm gonna continue this, this public hearing until, okay? So, that, now, let's pull on. Yeah, so I'll make, I'll make a motion to, 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 uh, or I'll entertain a motion, sorry, to continue this hearing until March seventh, twenty twenty-two at six P M.
Motion made.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. Alright, so now we'll move on to our regularly scheduled items. Um, I'm gonna kick it over to George for the personnel board.
We have a number of changes here. Uh, we want to acknowledge the resignation of Robin Broach from the Open Space and Recreation Advisory Committee effective ten sixteen twenty-one.
I'll make that mo- oh, sorry, nevermind, nevermind, catches me every time.
Uh, we also acknowledge the resignation of Reserve Officer Seth M. DeMello effective ten ten twenty twenty-one. And, uh, we want to discuss and vote to withdraw the conditional offer of, of full-time employment to Seth M. DeMello based on his resignation.
Alright, I'll, I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. I want to appoint Adam D. Salinero as a student officer effective eleven one twenty-one.
I'll make that motion. Uh, nevermind. Just an appointment, flipping up the vote on appointments?
Uh, we want to appoint Emily Anne Doris to the Cultural Council effective eleven one twenty-one through eleven one twenty-four.
So, yeah, hold, hold on one second, George, yeah, I think we need to vote on, so, on the first one, which is Adam D. Salino.
Let me go through all the appointments.
And then we'll do one vote, okay, that works for me.
So I just did Emily Anne Doris. Oh, she's, she's also being appointed to the Library Planning Committee effective eleven one twenty-one to six thirty twenty-two. And we have an appointment for Litan Longivan Uzel as Assistant Treasurer slash Assistant Tax Collector effective eleven one twenty-one to six thirty twenty-two. We want to appoint Melanie Foley as Confidential Secretary effective eleven twenty-two twenty-one through six thirty twenty-two.
So I think that's all of them.
Those are the appointments, so, uh, someone will make a motion for these?
Yeah, I'll make a motion.
I'll second it.
All in favor of the appointments?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, uh, we need to discuss and vote to add an additional firefighter to cover hours for firefighters' absence due to medical leave. I saw the chief yesterday, do you wanna address that, chief?
Yes, sir. Uh, one of our firefighters injured his shoulder off duty and he's gonna be out of work for at least six months out of memo. I attached the note to the memo I gave to the town administrator. I think we try to fill overtime and it costs probably close to fifty thousand dollars. So what I recommend is that we hire a T E P one firefighter, which probably costs about twenty-five thousand. So these carries for the six months and then we address it at the end of six months, because that puts in the, the window up, we have a lot of overtime for the, uh, spring, summer when the guys take their vacation time. Put that firefighter floating, that puts into next fiscal year, and now we have my replacement, my retire, I can move the deputy to administrative with me, he can shadow me during the day and we get a nice, smooth transition into the next, uh, year.
So basically, what we're doing is we're adding someone full-time.
Yes.
Permanent.
Yeah.
Okay. Alright, entertain a motion on that.
Yeah, I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Thank you.
Excuse me? Okay, uh, we want to vote to approve Patrolman Nathan Mellow for G H L forty-one one 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 F injured on duty status. I'm not sure effective with this one, effective ten fourteen twenty-one.
We have to, he had an injury on duty, so you have to reclassify him to under one eleven F.
Okay.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, vote to approve a memorandum of agreement between Town of Free Town and Debbie Alpetti, interim town administrator, effective ten eighteen twenty-one through three thirteen twenty-two. What is the memorandum exactly, did we have that?
Yes.
Having to vote to full-time, as you voted the last time.
Okay, why are we voting on that again?
You have to approve the actual written-up document.
Okay.
Alright, so I'll, I'll attend that motion.
I'll second it.
Sorry, I'll make that motion, alright.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Uh, discuss and vote on a stipend for executive assistant covering for the gap in full-time town administrator. This situation is, uh, that we've had our executive assistant doing double duty for a number of weeks and many hours. And, uh, we want to, uh, give her a stipend of five hundred dollars a week for thirteen weeks that she worked all those extra hours and overtime and all the extra responsibilities that went along with that. Any discussion?
No, you know that, yeah, so I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Excuse me?
You have to say the dollar.
Yeah, I mean, I guess it would say thirteen weeks time, five, five hundred is six thousand five hundred dollars.
The total amount is sixty-five hundred dollars. Okay?
Alright.
Um, discussion and vote to approve the extension of Jessica Thomas's agreement as Department Assistant through eleven thirty twenty-one. Uh, this is, uh, the, uh.
It's Friday training hours.
Friday, right.
Yep.
Uh, Jessica has left us, but she's agreed to come back and, uh, help with the training of the new staff.
Yeah, I'll, I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Discuss and vote to approve an agreement between the Town of Free Town, Public Employees Union Local one one four four, Free Town Highway Department, Laborers International Union of North America, A, AFL-CIO, effective seven one twenty-one through six thirty twenty-four. Uh, this is the agreement that was negotiated with the unions.
There was, yeah, there was just a, a line error at the original one, so this has already been negotiated, but we had to make a clerical correction and, uh, one of the wage classifications was left off, so this is updating that.
Yeah, alright, I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, uh, this is to approve the agreement between the Town of Free Town and Public Employees Union Local one one four four.
I think.
Locals is.
Clerical Administratives effective seven one twenty-one through six thirty twenty-four. Again, this is a negotiated, uh, union for Local one one four four. Is this, is this different than the one we just did?
Yeah, the first one was highway, this one's admin clerk.
I think I, I have looked at something wrong here, alright, so, um, I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. This discussion on addition, uh, an addition of a senior clerk floater and senior clerk for Treasurer Tax Collector's Office. Now Debbie, do you want to explain that?
So, um, I'm not sure about the Treasurer Clerk's office, but we have a position, let's stop, a few years ago or five years ago, there used to be a floater position within the town hall, senior clerk floater position. That person would go to different departments as needed, when needed. And then generally when an opening would come up, they would get absorbed into that department if they would, you know, if they applied for it and wanted it. We currently have, on an after-town meeting, a position with the Assessor's Department where they, um, have, they're funded to get a twenty-hour person, senior clerk for twenty hours a week, which gives them benefits. I entertain the thought and I have talked to the, uh, Board of Assessors and the Assistant Assessor about taking that twenty hours, adding sixteen hours to that position, creating a full-time position for a senior clerk and the additional sixteen hours would be funded out of the Selectmen's Administration's budget and that sixteen hours would be a floater for all the other departments that so choose to use the floater. But we run into trouble when people are on vacation, where we have single, um, employees in departments that we have to close the department or it's very difficult to operate because somebody's on vacation. And then there are times when different departments are very busy for, eh, today, the Tax Collector's Office, obviously the taxes are due today, she's very, very busy today. In February, the Assessor's Office extremely busy doing excise taxes and abatements and whatnot, different things. So it gives me the flexibility or it gives the town the flexibility in the office, in the town hall to be able to move somebody around as needed. And also, um, if somebody should be out sick or somebody's on a vacation, we may be able to utilize this person in that department. That's, that's my thought and there is different, there's different feedback on that.
I think it, this can work as long as there's some structure around it and how it's implemented, right? So like, you know, fir- first of all, for the person who gets a job, so they kind of know at least for the next couple of weeks or like, you know, it's planned out like what they're gonna be doing, right? Rather than just showing up and kind of like, oh, like, you know, cause I can see two different department heads, they both need that person, if they're not communicating properly, then this person's gonna be, you know, who, who do they go and help out, right? So I think that we definitely need some structure around it, like, it's something like, okay, if there's someone sick, they fill in that person that day and there's no questions asked, there's no, you know, you know, uh, confusion or ambiguity around that. So, I mean, I, I, I think it's definitely something, there's definitely a need for it. I don't know, that's kind of my thought.
No, I, I like that, but I, the only question I would ask also, I guess, is if this has gone through initially as the assessors and so the assessors are getting twenty out of their thirty-six hours, um, what hours are they gonna be in the assessor's office? And then, you know, we're saying, okay, well, they're needed in with the tax collector today because it's tax day or because, you know, someone called in sick. You know, how are we gonna, we're gonna have to say, oh, well, you know what, on Fridays normally they can't, cause they had, they're supposed to be with the assessors. So I guess there's some stuff that would have to work out with that.
I'd like to table this until we can have more detail.
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, I mean, I can work out, you know, I just know that they're gonna be, the assessor, the Board of Assessors, I'm sure will be looking to hires sooner than any, but I certainly put together, cause I've already talked about like how to train that person, the, the first, so many, uh, weeks possibly will be with the assessors, right? So that they can train that position, uh, but yeah, I can certainly put together what a plan might look like and how that might work. Uh, you know, and there are some downsides, like I said, um, more so to the assessing department because if a full-time position comes up, they may wanna move within the town hall, right? And then that, that, that weighs heavy on the assessors to have to retrain somebody. But I've been, you know, like I said, they, they were okay with it and it does help you attract, uh, more talent if you're offering a full-time position. So there are pros and cons to it.
Yeah.
I will certainly put some more planning together. Some departments are not interested, it doesn't work well for a floater because of the nature of their department and what they're doing. But there, a lot, a lot of the other departments are open to it, so.
I'd like to see, yeah, part of like, like, who does this person directly report to? Like, obviously, you know, you think that they'd be within the assessors, um, you know, but at the same time,
Yeah, I think.
Like, when the other sixteen hours, like, who's their boss, right? So we gotta figure that out and.
Yeah, we have a little more clarity on this to discuss at the next meeting.
I mean, we could budget for next year to get a floater, if that's something, you know, we could find.
Yeah.
Alright, can we move on on this?
I'm not sure what we were, I mean, we just, I'm not sure what, we, we are gonna be advertising for a senior clerk for that position.
Okay.
Um, so, yeah, that just went out this week or last week.
Alright, uh, next item, uh, discuss and vote on a pay rate for election workers effective ten one twenty-one. Uh, teller inspector, uh, this is for election workers.
Yeah.
Uh, teller inspector, fourteen dollars and fifty cents an hour. Clerk, fifteen dollars an hour. Warden, fifteen dollars and fifty cents an hour. Okay, any discussion?
No, seems reasonable, I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, uh, discussing vote to set the pay rate for the Board of Registriers, Sandra D. Lillo, Mary L. Bowen, uh, Blessing Rogers, effective ten one twenty-one. And, um, the pay rate will be fourteen dollars and fifty cents an hour. Okay, any discussion?
No, I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, uh, we need to execute a M O U for Patrolman for N A S C R E, effective eleven five twenty-one through eleven thirty twenty-one. Can we have detail on that, does someone, someone here have the detail?
I'm not seeing the packet, so this is, uh, retirement.
Retirement and incentive.
He's just changing his date, so he was supposed to retire on, um, eleven five, but he would like to do eleven thirty instead. So he's asking to continue his employment through the end of the month. And then Carlton did say, given the fact that one of his patrolmen is out on injured duty status and two others are attending the police academy, this would be helpful for him.
Okay, so this is basically just a month extension?
Yeah, alright, so I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Alright, thank you George, now it's back to me for regular Board of Selectmen. Um, so first we have approved the meeting minutes from ten four twenty twenty-one and ten thirteen twenty twenty-one, I'll entertain a motion to approve those minutes.
Motion made.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Um, weekly warrants, uh, zero one nine zero two seven, I'll entertain a motion to approve these weekly warrants.
Motion made, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So, uh, this, we, we were supposed to have a presentation from Lake Cam, but, um, on what they can do for the Free Town regarding the, the P E G, the P E G channel coverage uh, for meetings and things of that nature, they could not make it, so that's gonna be pushed. Um, I, so Luann, I think my general items numbers might be a little off, cause I have that as twenty-five on mine, so if I missed something?
Okay.
Do you have twenty-six?
I have it as twenty-six.
I have it as twenty-six.
I don't know how this happens to me all the time, it's always, I think it's.
Yes, this is mine, so.
Okay. I might have liked, I must have, I must have the edited version, like, I can just delete one and, so, I don't know, sorry about that.
It's all good.
Alright, so. Alright, so moving on, twenty-seven. Um discussion and vote change the primary tenant from the Free Town League Athletic Association to the upon-quit youth football and cheer organization. Uh for the football field on Long Pond and East Free Town, so I'm assuming there's some folks that speak on this?
Yes.
If you don't mind, wanna just, just so the uh camera can and microphone can catch it, if you wanna just state your name and, you know. Yeah, if you, I think, right, is that me, yeah, please just come up here if you don't mind.
Well, might as well.
I can say we all go look, cause we're all one decapitated.
We will have, there is one more person, uh Chris Webby, forty-eight, Chase Road, uh currently acting upon-quit junior football president. Wanna come up?
Oh.
Moved here five years ago, instantly fell in love with the town, coached soccer, got introduced to this program and absolutely fell in love with it. And now I'm the president and I give a lot of time in there.
Uh I'm Lisa Landergan, I am currently the vice president of the football program, I grew up in town, I have been here, I went to school with Deb actually. I've been here a long time, chose to come back here and raise my family here. I have um I have kids who have been involved in baseball and football, softball and cheer, heavily invested in both. I have had the absolute honor of serving on the baseball board and the football board. Um and I am just a huge proponent of seeing kids have great opportunities for athletic programs in the future.
Appreciate it, yep.
Jake Robitaille, president of uh Free Town League Athletic Association. I'll keep it short.
Good evening, my name is Carlos Loops, I'm one of the directors of the board. Uh in full disclosure, I'm also on the open space recreation committee, uh and a liaison to both to make sure that both ideas get shared in the time they may.
Alright, yeah, so I guess, you know, uh kind of what led to, you know, seems here that the. Youth football and cheer organization wants to be the primary tenant, but right now it's it's uh baseball. I mean, it's it, I guess, what's behind that kind of decision and.
So currently behind that right now is we've done a lot of modifications to the field, we've cleaned it up tremendously, it looks amazing. I speak with the the neighbors quite a bit, they're very happy um with what we're doing down there. There were some modifications that we had to do, there was some stuff, you know. We uh we would really like to take it to the next level and and bring the program to the next step, we have a lot of kids. We're being very successful, we're being noticed by other towns, we're being noticed by the O C Y F L, who governs our program. Um and it would just be really nice to have a place called home, I'd like to put lights up, I'd like to get another building down there. I'd like to get rid of that giant storage container, personally seems like an eyesore to me. Um, but it's just a lot of risk if we go there and it's not in our name, you know what I mean, it's a lot of time. Effort from others, money that we're putting in there, by no means are we trying to dismiss baseball out of it at all. Um, you know, we would, we work with them, we had, you know, talked about doing different things down there. Harvesting a field to give us more room as we transitioned from Ted Williams.
Yep.
Um, because there was, you know, Ted Williams, we were practicing on the other side of a fence, you know, we didn't really have anything, it was, you know, and even, I think even with baseball. You know, we were out in the outfield, you know, and it just, we didn't wanna damage those fields and those were nice quality fields that they play on. Um, uh then like I said, we we obviously were all friends, you know, and uh we wanna keep it very civil. Um and like I said, we're not trying to push them out, but we would just like to secure a little piece of home for ourselves and the community. And start also doing some stuff in the spring, keeping these kids active, healthy and uh and just being a good productive member of the the community.
So now, does anything, like right now, does anything prevent you specifically not being the primary tenant of kind of making the improvements that you wanna make, like, you know, I don't, I I'm not. Really too well versed with how that agreement's written, you know, what's really in, so.
Currently, no. There isn't anything that prevents them, we give them full access to uh do whatever they would like to the fields as long as it's, you know, in discussion with us, which they've done.
Okay, yep, and then, so how much do the seasons overlap each other, like, you know, I'll get think of a situation where, you know.
Not a lot, but we did recently have a T-ball team down there and it was posing concern between the T-ball team. And our football players, one, I don't want a kid to get hit with a softball or a T-ball. And two, I don't want somebody going on a pass route and hitting a little T-ball player. Um, now that we have, now that we've moved entirely down there, um we are using up quite a bit of the space with cheer and uh football. We are, we are full.
Yep.
Interesting, now with baseball, is it needed, is it more need, more space needed than what's over here?
So we, yes, we use, we use the complex here, we use the field at Ted Williams, we use K R R. Um and we also use Long Pond, Long Pond's nice because as I'm sure Chris knows, it's in the middle. Um so you tend to keep people happy.
Yep.
Uh by having a practice there, right now we only have one field there, um we allow them to take the other field. Um so currently it's just one field, we typically only use it in the spring, our fall ball numbers are much smaller because. Our our baseball players are also football players.
Yeah.
Right there, um they're also basketball players, so our fall ball numbers are much smaller, T-ball's a different animal, um. So we we, in the fall, we have, we have more than enough fields, um we don't need that field. In the spring, we need it, in the fall, we don't.
Yeah, like is there any kind of consideration of like combining these two organizations into one, you know, it seems like there's a lot of overlap in. Space to use, that the kids involved, like, you know, is that have have been considered rather than having one primary tenant?
That has not been considered, I don't know if I would like to consider that, no offense to Chris, I just feel like.
Just throwing that out.
It's tough enough to agree with mine, it's tough enough to agree with the baseball people.
Yeah, no, I hear you.
I was considering about joining the Parks and Recreation, not only just for this situation, but to help with my good ideas throughout the whole town. And also give us some level balance to have some say in that as well, that would probably be my only thought of where we could work together, you know. With good ideas that just benefit the whole community, that's what it comes down to, and these kids, to make sure that they're being taken care of. Um, I I think, you know, we're very different, two different programs. Um and like I said, we're not trying to oust them, we're not trying to push them out, there will always be a field for them to play on. But it's just as the president and all the time and all the money and everything that we would like to do moving forward, it would just feel really good that we have a home.
Yeah, I'm trying to think of a compromise, like if there was some type of agreement between the two, to make sure you did have a home without kind of just like changing the primary tenant, like, you know.
So we kinda, we kinda already have that in place.
Yeah.
Um with the agreement we have, uh and so we brought up at our board meeting and our board decided that at this time, they would like to see the current contract through. And this has nothing to do with Chris, Chris has been great, he's worked with us. The previous president who was there when we tried to do a project at Long Pond, it didn't work out exactly the way we we wanted it to do. Um, we wanted to go, I think that may be a little bit of the trepidation, um with them just wanting to just completely hand over the the contract.
Yeah.
With that said, we have no problem with Chris and his group putting up lights and doing absolutely everything they wanna do, they've taken that. Like the fence came down, fine, again, we use that field primarily for T-ball, maybe for rookie, we don't need a fence, we don't. Like, we're okay with that, we are fine with him putting, I don't say him, but the the organization doing whatever they want there, I do understand his concern. Um but as of right now, the way the contract's written, he can do all of it, um and I think it ends in six years, so.
April twenty twenty-four, I'm sorry, April twenty twenty-seven.
Twenty twenty-seven, it's a long contract, wow.
So it's a twenty-year contract we have with the town.
Yeah, cause it's our contract, it's a twenty-year contract with you, um in it, we signed over almost full rights to them to do what they want in conjunction.
Okay.
Yeah, we did a sub, sub, um sub-tenant contract with the football organization, essentially giving them all the authority they needed to do all the constructions, infrastructure plans that they needed. Both programs can both agree that, they're both growing in numbers.
Yes.
Right, and space is always gonna be a continuous thing that will always be discussed moving forward.
Yeah.
That being said, luckily, our programs run opposite ends of the year, one in the spring, one in the fall. There is some occasional overlap, of course, and as we expand programs, there'll be even more increased overlap. Currently, in the fall, this spring, we had a massive amount of numbers for T-ball, rookie, and everything else. We use those fields quite a bit for both uh games and for practice. Then in the fall, of course, this chair was an outlier, he is correct, that T-ball team, I'm the T-ball director, I I speak with everybody. Her mother, the parent, the the coach, was a parent for both T-ball and football, once he, her child played both T-ball, right, cause he needed a coach, and watched her child play football. It was the best idea to combine them together in order to get enough coaches for both teams, or both well, the T-ball, as well as watch, have a mother watch her son play at both levels. So that did create a little bit of, I wouldn't say friction, but that created some confusion as to why they were there and and of of course, a cautionary tale of who could and who can't get hurt. That's understood.
Yep.
Um, but there is a tenant agreement in place and we do use it quite a bit. We don't, I don't, as a board, we don't object any construction going on as long as we're told ahead of time, just in case, you know, if they're putting in a spa or a pool, we'd like to know where it is.
And like just scheduling, I can see that.
So my 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 only rebuttal to that is if if we do have free rein to do what we want. Why wouldn't they be respectful enough to kind of slide it over to us and we will be respectful to you to always make sure you have a field to play on? And give you the courtesy back that you would, you know, be respectful that we have now. That would be my only question of if we have such free rein to do it and and we would keep you involved as what we're doing over there. We would say, hey, listen, and I think honestly, we would be keeping the town involved as well, saying, hey, I need to file permits for lights, I'd like to get a building down there. Um so it just, it just kind of wandered in my head, why, why wouldn't we hand it over to us? And and we just give you the common courtesy of what you guys are giving us.
I I would also add to that, um we had a homecoming ceremony this weekend.
Yes, we did.
Send off our our eighth graders, um and so our, those kids were the first group of kids that could call a home field home. They didn't have a home field, we practiced at Ted Williams and um.
That's right, practice.
Yeah, yeah, we didn't, we didn't have anything. There are a lot of homes for baseball in this town and thank God there are, because I love that program dearly.
Yeah.
Um, but there is no home for football and cheer, except for that field, which now is their home. Um and baseball's been wonderful, but I mean, these people are my friends, there's no, there's no awkward moment here at all.
Uh like, where my gut is going right now, I was like, maybe if it's not broke, don't fix it, seems to be working well, but I think that's a really good point where, like, there there is a lot of baseball space, right? When you think of, you know, over here, K R R, and then that, like, do you think that there, is that, does that make sense to you, like, should there be a carved-out specific football area? And that could be it, I mean.
Yeah, we're absolutely fine with that being the specific football area, we just fortunately, I'll say fortunately, we still need that field and if we didn't. You know, under the current agreement, we could let them take that field as well. Fortunately for us, we still need that field and Chris and his board obliged and said, yeah, okay, we can, you know, we'll work with you. Um so just as of right now, we just wanna just keep it the way it is, like you said, just keep it, if it ain't broke, don't fix it, we're fine with them putting up lights, we. We have no intention to take anything away, like, like Lisa said, these, they're the same kids.
Yeah.
We're not, we're not, we're not gonna be like, oh, look, it's in our name.
Yeah.
We're gonna take the field back, not, not gonna happen, um we just prefer to to leave the lease as it is and let it run its course and then at the end of the course. You know, they'll have just as much right to apply for it as we will and I guarantee you, I, they're they're gonna get it and we're completely fine with that, but as of it is right now. To answer Chris's question on why, um like I said, I think it's the previous that still burns some of the board members. Cause I, I honestly, I'll be honest with you, Frank, I thought it was gonna be more of a, like, open, oh, yeah, maybe, it was adamantly new. Which I was kind of surprised about, but again, they all said, let them do what they wanna do, but let's just keep it as it is right now, we don't wanna touch the contract and let them do what they want to do.
Well, how can you have disgruntled people, you know what I mean, I feel like that's always gonna be over my head.
No, no, no one's disgruntled, no one's trying to remove anything, there's, there's no, there's no, no name calling, finger pointing, none of that's going on, I I assure you that didn't happen. Right now, we have a tenant agreement with the town from tw- till twenty twenty-seven, with a lot of things in there, it's a trifold agreement with K R R, uh such a complex and Long Pond. At this point, we wanna re rewrite the agreement at this point, it is still seven years, we have the ultimate rights to the agreement based on the contract that we signed. With the select at the time, the board members at the time, and we just wanna fulfill that that agreement, that's all. Once that agreement is said and done, and when it's time to write a new one, then by all means, we're more likely to say, the new home for the upon-quit high school football team.
It is your home, it's your home.
It's your home, yeah, uh so, but right now, we have that in, we have that.
Yeah.
Like, there were, there were proposals to rent our field in the spring when there was gonna be a spring football season and there was a proposed amount that was gonna be voted on at the baseball board meeting. So I recuse myself from that because I have interest in both things, but I'm aware of it. So we would not have discretion right now to say, like, we don't have authority for baseball to say, oh, you're not playing in the spring, we're gonna rent out your field. Even though we're seeding it, we're irrigating it, we're cleaning it up, we don't have discretion about that, and so that's.
So you were just, I'm trying to remember.
Oh, right.
Yeah, okay, I was just trying to remember what it was, yeah, okay.
And so, and there were actual fees discussed of what that would be, so it wasn't just like a hypothetical, it was, that was really gonna happen.
It's scary, it's scary to think about, like, you know, at any point in time, the rug can get ripped out from a hundred and sixty-four kids and parents. And firefighters that are there on Sundays.
Not, not true, cause they, we can't just rip it out because of the agreement we have, we can't just rip it out, we can't.
I was just gonna ask, is there a way to get something in writing that makes you feel comfortable, but you're saying there already is something in writing?
Correct, there is, there is, sub, a sublease in writing, um giving them the authority they need and and just like they tell us what's going on, we would tell them what's going on, based on that agreement as well. So there is no, there is no, hey, this is gonna happen, we're gonna put up a new fence tomorrow for T-ball and that's primarily who uses it. Um that's why it was okay to remove fences, cause T-ballers, you know, they're hitting it within their age limit, you know.
Have you guys read the agreement?
I haven't read the specific, I mean, you know, actually, maybe I have in the past, I haven't read it recently though, I think.
I mean, when I, when I read it, and I know everybody interprets things differently, I read it as it was very baseball-written, any kind of, any kind of things done to the field. It, you know what I mean, so they gave me free rights to override the lease a little bit.
Yeah.
Which, you know, again, I go back to, I would just really seek the approval of having it go in our name and. Allow baseball the same courtesy that they're giving us and not drag it out seven years so that I can really do some fun stuff down there. I mean, there's a lot of area, the town has supported me very, very well, Frank from the highway department, I had a guy go down and they came down there and even, they cut the grass. And I was gonna talk to you guys about it, because I know it came up as a topic of the 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 amount of money that went down there for the extra overtime. That we would like to reimburse or come up with an agreement for next year. There's other areas in property down there that I think the town could utilize a little bit more, I mean, I see people down there, they're walking their dogs, they're walking the dogs on the field. I was even thinking about like, hey, maybe there is a section of property down there, we could put a dog park in.
I'm all about that.
Uh hey, I mean, there are so many things. There's, there's a lot of good area down there, you guys, you guys went in, you cleaned the beach up and you completely complimented what we've been doing. And I can't continue to stress the hard work that we've been putting in down there and I feel like we should be rewarded with what we're doing for the town.
And we don't disagree with that whatsoever as far as baseball, as far as the contract, it's baseball friendly, cause it's a baseball field and we wrote it to accommodate the football players. We did that in courtesy to to our friends, to, to the football. We never used that section, that's why I said, you know what, we're not using it, let's allow them the the rights to do that. And and working with the town at that time in twenty seventeen, we asked them, how was, what was the best way to go about this? And their, and their suggestion, in which we did, was to write a sublease.
And how long is the sublease for, is it?
As long as, as our lease, our tenant lease is with the town. So that's based on the recognition we received from folks across the aisle, that's what we did and that's what we're. And and we all want the same field, we get it, and we we all, we agreed that it's, use it, but we also use it six months, eight months out of the year as well for baseball. Our numbers were massive last year and we used it quite often.
Our football numbers.
The one foot, the one T-ball field.
We use both, actually.
Well, the other ones are there.
Well, we, we.
I've been here on fields, hold on, I've been here for three years now and when I first moved in to, and and don't take this the wrong way, when I first moved in, my son played T-ball. And it was an embarrassment when we went down to that T-ball field, there was trees growing in the middle of the field, it was very untaken care of.
Is this, is this at Long Pond?
Yes, yes, the benches were falling apart and 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 the grass was very, very long and it it and still to this day, if you go down there. I brought my board members with a bobcat, we completely harvested one field, didn't put grass seed down, just left it. We completely harvested one field, didn't put grass seed down, just left it the way it was. We made a whole baseball field. He agreed that he was gonna bring stoned dust down after, never happened. The seed filled, the grass filled in, and it doesn't even look like a baseball field, other than three bases and a pitcher's mound. That we put in for them to take care of. And it's still, please, take a ride down and have a look. It is not a maintained, working T-ball field or baseball field. But, and, and I'm not saying, I just, they're so passionate about this field, but it's not even being maintained.
So, you can go look at the field, we just spent twenty grand on it, and there's weeds everywhere.
I, I get that, but.
Um, I'm not disagreeing with that, that field probably gets.
Can we postpone this vote till we can do a little more?
Yeah, I, I wanna bring the contract up, I'm gonna kind of read it, I, I, I should have done that before this meeting, just didn't have time to do that. So I'm gonna look through it, I think that, you know, this is like one of the hardest decisions I've ever had to make, actually. I think you both really have some solid points here, so this is not easy. So I, I don't wanna make it just a gut decision, I wanna kind of do a little more thinking on this. So, I mean, unfortunately, it might mean we might have to come back, yes, sir.
Sorry, if I could, I apologize for arriving late. I'm Jason Chisholm, I'm the athletic director for the Pontiac Junior Football Cheer Association. Um, I've just been sitting back listening, one, because I arrived late. But, but two, I, um, I can tell you that I've been involved with the organization going on seven years now. Um, prior to joining the board, I was actually, uh, coaching in the system as well for T-ball. Um, one, I can attest to the passion for both sides of this, right? I, I know what we're doing here in Freetown, Lakeville for baseball, I know the numbers are up, I know what we've been doing for football. What I would suggest is, as you postpone this, what I would ask you all to think about is, really, I think, help both of us with. What I'm gonna say is probably a simple ask, but it's complicated in terms of how it lays out for all parties involved. The simple ask is, both organizations wanna continue making investments in that area for the children. We on the football side have only just scratched the surface of the things that we could. And really, quite frankly, should do to make sure that that playing surface is as safe and as accommodating as it could be. Right, I've played a lot of football, I was a portion of being a college athlete as well. I've been on a lot of different field tours, et cetera, right? We don't have the worst thing going out there, but it's by far not the best. And there's simple things that we've talked about doing as an organization, that one would beautify the area. Two, make it more accommodating and a better playing surface. And to Chris and Lisa's point, I think we can do it in a way that would still allow for baseball to still participate. Probably both of the fields, if we're being honest here, but primarily the one that they think we're talking about for T-ball specifically. Before we can continue to make those investments, though, I think what we're asking is, how can we best do that? Time, effort, resource, funding, with the peace of mind knowing that that effort isn't gonna be lost. Because at some point, and, and gentlemen, I, I appreciate everything that you said. But the fact of the matter, boards do change at times, and seven years is a good amount of time. And you mentioned as well that there was some, um, there's some leftover, I'm gonna say, not ideal feelings. That kind of got in the way of some of the things that we've been trying to talk about amongst our boards. What I would suggest is, as long as the goodwill is the goodwill, that's great. But should something change on the side of their board and their organization, that now throws up walls that none of us intended for, right? What about the investments that we've made to date and want to continue to make?
So like, kind of, like, I can say beefing up that, that sublease, right? Something of that nature, making that a little more ironclad, so you, you have that, you know, assurance. And that, that makes sense, something of that nature makes sense to me, um, that's.
And we'd be open to, if you wanna beef up the sublease completely.
Yeah.
Open to it, I feel like it gives them everything they need, but, I mean, take a look.
Yeah, I'm, I'm gonna, I'm gonna have to read through it, um, yeah, so just to make sure.
And one last thing, if you could, as you're looking at that, is, um, we are more than willing to help. Sort of keep an eye on those fields. We would ask, though, that we kind of balance the level of effort, right? Like, if there's going to be effort on your part with that one field that we're talking about, that is equal to or maybe even greater than the effort we're putting on that field. And I think that's perfectly fine, we'll make sure we keep an eye on it, make sure it's still up there. If, though, it continues as it has been, where, you know, we're kind of putting the effort in on, on sort of the T-ball field, and nothing's really being done with the other field. And I get it, you guys got a lot of fields and you're busy, then, you know, we kind of wanna acknowledge that. And say, look, it is the football field, there is the T-ball field which we'll make, but maybe that other field, if nobody's taking care of it. We don't want it to fall on us to have to also take care of that, let us just say, hey, well, make it look nice, right? But let's make it a multi-use kind of a thing then over there.
Are you referring to the one field or the other?
Yeah, so there's one field, like, if you're facing a field, right?
The first one you come in the way.
Yeah, that one is completely a baseball, a T-ball field, baseball field, right? I think we all agree, we need to make sure that maintained and stays maintained. And I think you all are saying you're willing to do that, right? But we're saying, if we're down there, we'll help out as well. The other field, which really hasn't been used for anything, um, we don't want that to fall on us to have to maintain that, I think.
So there was a contract between, well, there was a discussion and a, and an agreement between me and the previous president. I had sent over a PDF, uh, big call-out boxes, big bright colors with a color cord. Of what we were taking, what we were doing. And the reason why we were doing that was because of COVID, and we were trying to be safe and keep safe distancing. And keep everybody in this program, one, active, healthy, and, and, and having fun, cause that's what it's about, having fun. So us harvesting the small field, and, and even the previous president agreed, didn't really make sense. He said to me that we don't really use this T-ball field as much, and was in agreeance with it. And, and, you know, handshake, no problem, went back. And I even know from speaking to somebody else on the board, that the baseball side was happy with what we did to that T-ball field. And how nice it was, and how everything was good. They said, thank you, good job. We had five of our football program guys down there, and there was two guys from baseball, and they were helping, they were, you know. But we had to cut trees down, there's trees over the fences, it was, it was a lot of work. And I mean, and, and like I said, and, and we are competitive. I have two pro, two levels right now, going to the playoffs, starting this week. And, and I know I'm a coach of one of them, and we're gonna go to the Super Bowl, and we're gonna win, and we're gonna make this town just as proud as baseball does.
Yeah.
So it's like, you know, it just, I, I just, and, and, and like, like what my athletic director said, you know, it's like, we just wanna make sure. We have a healthy place to live, and we just, we don't wanna push them out. But at the same time, like, we'll do what we can to help them with their field. But obviously, they're not out there cutting the grass, they're not out there doing the seed slicing like we are. But then the other thing comes back in, the town did support both of us on cutting that field this year. So there is a, you know, a dollar value of man hours and weed whacking to that. Um, and we just, like I said, like, like what you said, we wanna make sure we're respectful of each other. And you hit it right on the head, Trevor, this is probably one of the hardest decisions you guys will have to make.
And I just wanna make sure it's very clear, I mean, I know personally, I really appreciate what you guys do, you know, the time and effort, and I think it's what really builds like the fabric of our community. You know, youth sports like this, and I think it's awesome you guys do that, so I wanna make that.
Thank you for what you guys do, too, and women. It's not easy, I sat through the last.
So I'll have this on another agenda coming up, and I'll go to do some more research on that, and maybe Debbie or Blam reach out to, and, you know, maybe just this meeting that's not a. You know, in front of the board, we can kind of get together and try to hammer something out, and some that, you know, everyone wants here, so.
And it can even be, um, if it's okay, maybe it's almost treated as somewhat of a living document, where as we go through, we just meet periodically, and if we have to make adjustments, we can do that. I think we're, we're definitely open to something like that. And then the last thing I'll say is that, um, yeah, I wanna echo Chris's statement. We have two programs that are going, and we expect to win banners for both. And it is a feeder system for both, oh, colony and a Pontiac, right? And so we wanna make sure that football is doing well, we wanna make sure baseball is doing well. You mentioned your numbers are up, we expect our numbers to go up as well. Also, there are children from other towns, from nearby towns, that are starting to come and play in this program. Because word is spread about what we've been doing with youth football here compared to other programs that are in the area. And children and families from other places, not just Lakeville and Freetown, want to come and play, so.
That's awesome, that's a great sign, right? Oh, I appreciate it, thank you very much. All right, so now we're gonna move on to twenty-eight, I wanna say. Discussion vote in town hall hours, day after Thanksgiving. So, uh, day after Thanksgiving is a Friday, correct? So it is, would be open till noon? In the past, I've been told that the town hall was, was, people came to work, but they're public, wasn't open to the public? Does that sound right?
Typically, you guys have voted to close to the public and left it up to the, so that's to give the public the understanding that there's no business to be transacted. And then it's been up to the employees whether to use vacation time or personal time or come to work. Uh, but it's sort of, the decision to close to the public has been so that the public does not show up there thinking they're gonna get service.
Yeah, and this is, it, one thing I think about this, uh, are, if I can see that being a day that, you know, people. Generally, people do have that day off, they might wanna go and transact and actually take care of some stuff. On a, it's a weekday, that's a day off for, you know, for a lot of people, I mean. So, this seems like another no-win situation, I find myself in.
I mean, I can tell you the majority, um, I wanna say majority, maybe about half the employees tend to come to work, about half don't. And there are not very many people that show up trying to do anything, because I think they equate it with the fact that. School is closed, most other government buildings are closed, um, say the post office, um.
Yeah.
I would be curious to see what other surrounding towns do, not that we should base ourselves off of what other towns do, but, you know, it would be nice.
I think it's, it's, it's unique, too, just the fact that it's, it's, um, well, that's a Friday, so it's a half day anyways. It's like, you know, so you have four hours of, you know.
We just had some, you know, choice words from concerned residents based on us pulling hours away from something else. So it's tough to, yeah, see those pull hours away, but you're seeing that this is the way it's always been.
As long as I work for the town, yes, as far as I can remember, um. And again, I think it's just the general, say if you were open. You will have people taking vacation time that day anyway, because they either have traveled or they wanna do. So you, you're more giving the public notice that rather than have them show up and find the office they want is closed. Just not to expect any of the offices to be open that day.
The only thing I won't say is if we decide that we're going to do this, that we need to make sure we do everything in our power to make sure that the residents know we will be closed on that day.
Yeah, we've typically, signs have gone up on the door, the flash or whatever, um. There, there's been generally good notice, but you're, you're unlikely to find a lot. You, you're unlikely to find more than maybe half the people working that day. Then you get into the dispute of an office has two people, and both are traveling, and one's the department head and wants the day off. And the subordinate is not gonna be there anymore. Trying to open that day, I think, is more of a headache for you than just not being open.
Yeah. We can't just totally close it, can we?
Like, that's up to you guys. You, you have a bit of a bargaining issue of if you close the town hall, but you don't close other departments.
Yeah, no, I can see that, yeah.
You would have to compensate accordingly.
I mean, I can tell you when I was, I was a library trustee for ten years, as library trustees, we would hope to close the library that day. The librarians would choose to work anyway, they would tell us they did not want the day off. So different departments have different things that work for them, and I, it, I know it sounds weird, but I think it's been done primarily as a courtesy. To the general public to not have them show up and not have the day.
Yeah, I, I, I see what you're saying, where if, you know, a department only has, both people in that department are off, then.
Right.
Then what, then they can't get anything done anyways, and there's kind of a mismatch, I mean, I get that.
Yeah, you tell people the town hall's gonna be open, and then the three people they need to see took a vacation.
Ha- has anyone put vacation in for this day yet? So that's interesting.
It's generally waited to see what you guys do.
That makes sense.
Cause if you voted to close, then there's no reason to put a vacation.
Yeah.
If we vote to stay open, we would have to keep at least one person who needs the bathroom.
Yeah, well, that's, that's.
Yeah, like, is that, is that, I think you're right, but is that feasible? Like, are we? Yeah, I, I can see that, okay, so we could say hypothetically, we vote to keep it open. And then people are gonna take, we can't stop people from taking PTO, right? So.
Well, you, you can.
Can we? You said you can't take a vacation? Oh, I guess you're right.
You know what I mean?
But then they could, you can't stop them being sick.
You can't stop them from saying, I'm not coming in, I'm sick.
Yeah, so Debbie, what do you think, what's your opinion on this?
That's actually a very valid point.
My opinion is that for this year, I think you leave at status quo, where you, um, close the town hall to the public and give them ample notice. And allow the employees to use their time to take the day off if they so choose, and come to work if they so choose. I think going forward, maybe we look to do something differently, um, in the future years, but I just think with the notice that we have, we can't.
Yeah, I think that, I think that makes sense. I, I do agree it's kind of a silly, silly precedent we have here, and I think that, but, uh, it is, it is what it is, right? I think that's something maybe we get ahead of earlier next year and communicate that, and, I mean, I, I, I wish it was open and people were there, but. I don't think that's gonna happen. All right, so I'll entertain a motion to, uh, continue on with what we have been doing, and, um, we'll have the town hall be closed to the public. With ample notice the day after Thanksgiving. I don't feel great about it, but there's no, there's no one here, so do I have that motion, or?
Motion, yeah. I have a real heartburn with this, just not business-like.
But apparently you guys did it live, or maybe last year not because of COVID, but it seems like, based on what we're being told, unless we're being lied to, and I would think like.
Just because we've done it forever, doesn't mean that we have to continue it. I mean, if we wanna continue it, then go ahead, but.
I mean, I, I, I'll be, I don't wanna continue, I just think, I think Debbie has a good point where it's just, it's, you know, Thanksgiving's a couple weeks away. I don't know if we're gonna be able to, you know, right, that kind of historic, uh, precedent in that short term of time. You know, setting the, setting the.
In the interest of disclosure, I always come into work that day, so you have benefit. I don't give up a vacation day for that, though.
I think one thing that I really have an issue with, when we discussed, uh, you know, people. If they're supposed to be here, they're supposed to be here.
Yeah.
And when we say, well, they'll call it sick, I think that's kind of disrespectful and.
Yeah.
It's just not right.
It's a general assumption, yes, and I can agree with you and appreciate that, but I'm just saying that, what, if someone feels like they've been getting. The problem is, is if, if this has been happening for a long time, even though it's something that was always kind of given as an extra. It just becomes ordinary, right, until you take it away. So then if you take it away, they're gonna get angry, and then they're gonna revolt against you. And I'm not, I'm, I'm painting a big picture, I'm not pointing this towards any person, department, anything, you know, I'm just talking about. My general knowledge as an employer.
Okay, we have different knowledge base then.
No, that's, that's true, I, I gotta respect what you say, cause you have a couple more years on me.
But I, I would say, if someone wants to take the day off, let them request it like they would any other time. And then we grant it accordingly. If we, let's say we don't grant a day for whatever reason, and they call it sick, well, that's up to them.
Yeah.
But we're doing the right thing, is the way I look at it.
Yeah, and then, but then I guess here's my problem, you have a department head and one employee, the, both people wanna take the day off. That can make an issue where you're saying, we need to have one person there, and then, okay, well, now the department head takes it off, and they, now their. Employee becomes unruly, or their employee took it off first, and now the department head's like, oh, man, I wish I would take it off, and then they're upset, so it's.
I have a question, that, do we have any policy, or should we have a policy? That has, you know, you needed to request vacation so many days before? Because i- if that was the case, we wouldn't have the situation, right? We would know by to, by the time we make this decision, if we have the coverage.
This is one of our big issues that we've discussed with Deb already, and that is, we need to review our policies and our procedures. And, uh, I don't know if that is addressed in our cur- I don't know if that is addressed in our current policies.
It's addressed in the current contract in that to take a single vacation day, you have to give one day's notice.
Yeah.
So you could conceivably have everybody come in that Tuesday and say, I'm not going in Friday.
And there's nothing you can do about it?
More than I I won't.
That's part of the union contracts or just the?
That is in the union contracts.
What does the contract say?
One day notice.
If one vacation day is one day's notice.
But does that mean you you have to grant a request?
I will tell you that when this came up once before, one of Deb's predecessors said that you could not stop somebody from taking a properly requested vacation day, whether or not that's true.
I that's I've never heard of anything like that.
Also keep in mind that many of the employees only have to request this of their department head. They are not requesting it of the selectmen.
Yeah.
So that's fine. That's I I don't have a problem with that.
Or my own or the administrative office.
Right.
Yeah.
Which I go.
So I don't miss all the notice.
So the the whatever the policy is, it is. And I I mean, what I'm saying is we should follow the current policy because we really don't have a choice.
I just, I tend to think it goes back to, and it sounds very weird because you're talking about employees getting a day off, but it's the general courtesy of not having people show up that day to find the office as empty as why you've done what you've done in the past.
Yeah, kind of almost like we're somewhat forced into that.
It's it's almost like a snow day. Sometimes for the safety of people traveling, you don't have everybody show up, but some people are still there like a skeleton.
Yeah.
But it's more that the town hall would be closing at noon anyway. If somebody has either taken a day off from work or made some arrangement to get down there and then they find that the building and health departments are totally unstaffed and they can't do what they wanted to do.
How how does that affect every other department? How does it affect your department?
As a rule, I mean, I I always have a few people take the day off, but.
They request it?
Yeah.
And you grant it?
Pretty much, yeah. Without making the light of it or making, try to make it simple. You got two major holidays, you got Thanksgiving, you got Christmas. Why don't you just say? If you've got two people, you can take Thanksgiving, you I get Christmas. That's it.
That makes sense.
But it would, that would make sense if they fell on the same day, Christmas falls on a Saturday. So you could say, oh, well, you get Christmas Eve off or something, right? But.
Yeah, I hear what you're saying though.
But if you have two people who both want Christmas Eve off now all of a sudden.
Christmas and New Year's Eve is one we tend to close.
No, I I understand what you're saying, but I I to me, the important thing is that we have a policy and that we follow the policy. It sounds like.
It's almost a policy for the department heads. It's a policy for the department head saying you need to have coverage on these two days.
I I don't I don't know if that's the.
No, I'm saying that that's what we do need, right? It's I think it's outside of the union kind of contract, but it's, I mean, I might be.
I'm sure we would have to get negotiated with.
Yeah.
Yeah, the other difference is, is you're weird and I appreciate obviously what Chuck's saying and doing, but it's different for Chuck in the fact that he has more than just him and one other guy. And, you know, so it's, there's a little more flexibility with him saying, yeah, I have a couple of guys who take the day off. If Mike takes the day off, guess what? His department's closed, cause he's literally the only person in his department.
And right now, because of staffing, I'm not the only department that's like that. If the treasurer decided to take that day off, there's no treasury staff.
Yeah.
If this is another, this has been a fun meeting. This is another no win.
But as we're having this conversation, I I looked over to Luanne, you're gonna have this question come up again because traditionally.
Same thing.
You have, well, you, the selectmen traditionally have closed early on Christmas Eve and New Year's Eve.
And we will, I I we're gonna do that for you. We're gonna close at noon time.
There you go. But different different years that's been hit.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
There was one year where New Year's Eve, you closed to the public at twelve, but the employees had to stay until two. I mean, it it these holidays, this, these practices exist and they're not, to George's point, written down anywhere. They're just sort of done.
Yeah. All right.
So you'll see this again.
So I guess I made the motion, um, I did get a second, or no, did I? I did not get, no, sorry. I.
No, no, no.
I didn't get a second yet, so.
No, he didn't.
Um, I mean, I can second my own motion, right? Uh, and.
What 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 was the motion?
The motion was to continue what we've done last year, this year.
Okay, we can do that because it is such a mess.
And we don't still have the processes and procedures in place yet.
Right.
Yeah.
So but part of the motion then should be that a policy is written.
Oh, yes.
Well, I think we have to separate, right?
Oh, I meant that, yeah.
Would you put that in the same same motion or would you make something separate, separate motion? I get whatever you include.
Yeah, I'll amend the motion to include that. For next year, we have a policy written regarding ho- uh, the day after holidays or holidays.
All right, I'll make the motion.
Need a second then?
Much as I hate to, I would like well said.
Appreciate it. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
That wasn't.
Uh, no, it's not. It's not. There's no right answer. There's no, it's a no win situation. Once again. All right. So moving on. Let's actually look at this list. Discussion and vote on revolving fund transfer request in amount $10,000 to fund the police details, boat and beach attendance for May through June 2022. All right. And anyone, can anyone speak to this a little more, just as? I feel like we have.
So it says we spending authorization limit approved at town meeting was $9,000. Amount of increase in department spending, $10,000, so the new department revolving fund. So it's just, um, for increasing.
We're gonna be mailing the, uh, beach, May and June?
I think so, or it's gonna be through.
Yes, so the additional amount, the reason for this is because we didn't anticipate when we had asked for the $9,000 that we were gonna have to have police details at the boat and the beach ramp.
Yeah.
Vice versa. Um, for this year, and we will be continuing those, um, for May and June and also need to be able to pay the staff that we have for those two locations for May and June.
And I think that it's worked out.
Yes.
Right, we're a much better situation or place than we were.
Right.
Before we had.
We have a small working group, um, that's Carlos Lobes, the chief of police and myself. And we're all in kind of agreement that we feel ness- necessary to keep those police details at least when we're starting off May and June of next season. So we would need these funds in order to make that happen.
Motion made.
I'll second it.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So this, uh, discussion of vote to request to remove the March 23rd, 2021 Free Towns candidates forum video from the Towns YouTube. This is a gentleman who was a candidate. He doesn't want that up anymore. I have no problem taking it down, no sweat off my back. So I'll entertain a motion.
Public record.
It's a, I mean.
It wasn't sponsored or reported by the town.
Yeah.
So we put it up as a courtesy, um, for election time.
It's not, I I don't think it's like a town, a free town public.
Yeah, who was that? That'd be different.
If that's the case, then it's not even on call.
Yeah.
We have it on on YouTube right now, so we just need, you need to tell me if you'd like me to take it off of our YouTube per this gentleman's request.
I'm okay with it. I'll have to look at myself.
All right, so, yeah, I'll entertain a motion to, uh, remove the the candidate's video.
Motion made.
Second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, now it's another tricky one. So discussion of vote to amend the snowplow contract language to remove the requirements of commercial general liability and possibility of raising required insurance levels for fiscal year 2023. So someone wanna break this one down for me? So, I mean, Chuck, I I'm sure you you're here for this one.
I certainly can't, I just can't speak on the insurance, cause nobody understands insurance, not even the insurance agent. Understand insurance. Bottom line, it's November 1st, we have zero subcontractors signed up. We need at least thirty, thirty-two subcontractors signed up. We have zero. Basically, if it snows tomorrow, main roads will be plowed. Anybody that lives in a subdivision, they can't just snow shovel. That means, and and I say subdivisions, I mean, I'll cut close to homes where they show us. Will not be plowed until everything gets plowed.
Oh, that's a main road, Chuck.
No, no, I I I will, I will, I will tell you that, uh, sort of both of them will get plowed.
Yeah.
Because whoever plows into narrow road, they have to turn around sometimes.
It's only a joke.
No, I get it. I know you're busy.
I should hope it snows the day after Thanksgiving.
It's. It's a, it's a huge concern. I think the latest change, whatever it was, um, seems like we're the only community that's doing that. I think our limits are are more restrictive than mass dock.
So it's pretty much, it's the requirement that we have for the general liability is over and above what it really needs to be is the potential.
Well, I again, I from what I've heard from contractors, the five or six that have contacted me, they're looking at roughly an increase of $5,000 to their insurance. Now, mind you, a company, a landscaping company, a construction company, whoever it may be, already carries that insurance.
Yeah.
But Mike McHugh wants to plow the snow, cause he's laid off. He might make $1,500 plowing snow for me, so it's not really worth him spending $5,000 to make $1,500.
Yeah.
It's not really worth him make, spending $5,000 to make $5,000.
The fact, I I remember this coming up a couple of years ago.
Aye.
But isn't it the insurance company that says to the plow contractor, if you don't have the right insurance, you're not gonna be covered at all?
Again, insurance to me is you might as well have that lucky brain surgery.
Well, that's that's my understanding. So.
I I know, I know the town's insurance company is saying one thing, but of course, nobody from the town's insurance company lives in the town. Bottom line, bottom line, bottom line. It's November 1st, we have zero subcontractors signed up. And you will not have what?
We actually have 21 trucks signed up, but the only one ha- is approved that has the commercial general liability. If that part is removed, then all of the others, I believe, they named us as additionally insured. All of the others have the current, um, guidelines. So that's, it's number 14 in the contract that's, um, in your packets.
Yeah.
Added the commercial general liability. And I know Deb and I were on a call with Maya, our insurer, on the, um, limits and everything, and Deb, I don't know if you understood it more than I did, I think, but what did they say about the commercial?
So my understanding, and don't, you know, I'm gonna do the best I can with insurance, cause I'm with Chuck. But the commercial general liability piece would cover more of the finished product. So if they were plowing a road and they, you know, they it's more like if you were shoveling a sidewalk or something and you didn't do a good job and somebody slipped and fell, like the end result.
Okay.
But if they were driving the truck and they hit something, the liability for the automobile insurance would cover it. But the commercial general liability generally covers finished product. And I feel like Chuck is out there watching. He knows what the finished product is. He's taking care of that piece of it. All, obviously, we wanna protect the town as much as possible. And I think that's what the insurance company's intent is. However, our, with this, with this extra requirement, we can't get plow drivers. I did make some phone calls to other towns. They they do not have this requirement. They have the 100, 300. That piece, if you were to entertain anything, I think could be increased to 250, 500 or even a million CSL for very little dollars. But I think that's something, again, we're so late to the game.
Yeah.
And I would hate to do that now. I think it's something that we need to talk about again.
For next season.
Yeah. But, uh, so that is my understanding to the best of my ability is that it's more on a finished product than it really is the actual driving down the street and an accident occurs, they'll they'll be covered for that. I think that you changed the contract to say that we had to be additionally insured. That's a great thing. And that they have to have commercial plates. Um, I think that's also a good thing, and I think that's where the snow plowing is then covered because you have.
They're commercial plates. That would automatically be commercial coverage.
Right, well, no, if you have commercial plates, you don't necessarily have to have commercial general liability. I've had commercial plates on my truck and not commercial general liability insurance. And commercial general liability is extremely expensive. So I do understand, y- you know, you are talking $5,000. I used to pay $18,000 for commercial liability. It's very expensive. So I I I I think, you know, you have to balance. We we won't have any plows.
Yeah, we need, we need plows.
If you do say commercial plates, then that reduces the number that we threw out there of 21, cause not all of them have commercial plates.
No.
And I don't know off the top of my head how many.
As as a rule, I think we we adopted the commercial plates five years ago or so. There was a great deal of fight back, but the registry now has a special plate for just plowing snow.
Oh, a snow.
Snow, I think it's an SI that's got them. And those are that, those are good from November, whatever, to May.
Mike, Mike would know that.
I I I have a number of guys that 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 get those plates, just plow the snow.
Yeah, and then, so that that seems reasonable.
Yeah, I I think, I think basically, if we could go back to what it was last year.
Yeah.
We're fine. Like I said, if if we've got.
Twenty-one already?
Say, say we got 18 valid guys signed up tomorrow.
Yeah.
I can rest it all.
Okay.
But we, and we'll keep, cause inevitably people get excited when snow gets in the forecast, you know, 65 degrees today or whatever it was. So we're usually thinking about it.
Yeah.
If there's four to six inches of snow coming on Sunday, well, now some people, they shifted on high gear.
Yeah.
And they they get excited about it. I said, all of us, I shouldn't say, well, the four or five subcontractors that I've heard from so far, they're flipping flipping enough because it's it's $5,000 figure. And obviously, no one's gonna do that.
Yeah.
No.
No, I I I, that doesn't make economic sense.
It would make it, you know.
Yeah.
You know, and, you know, they, I've had people talk to me, you know, it's like, well, if you paid more money. No, we paid more. We honestly, our pay rates are decent.
Yeah.
If I give you $5 more now, a normal snowstorm, you're gonna make an extra 20 bucks. It's not worth it.
Yeah.
I've heard, uh, we, years ago, we used to give cutting edges for snowplows. Then as the industry, um, we all got away from that because Debbie plows snow for me for 10 hours, and we all go home with Debbie plows 40 driveways. And she's wearing out my cutting edge.
Yeah.
We all decided, it's like, you know what?
Doesn't really make sense.
I'm not gonna pay to, for you to plow somebody else's driveway. So we got away from that, and then, and that was an industry thing. All the towns got away from giving up cutting edges. So I think our pay rates are decent. It's never enough if you ask the subcontractors. I think the main thing is whatever this last little change was, kinda threw it over the edge.
Yeah. All right.
Go back to where we were. I think the people will come. And honestly, you you see what's going on in the world as far as trying, people trying to get employees. It's hard for whatever reason. I don't think Build It Back Better is working. I don't see where we're getting. Our numbers are gonna be down no matter what. I know Berkeley's at 50% of the people they normally have. Franken Lightville's fighting, Dyken's fighting to get people. If you drive through Dyken, they have lit signs on every street called begging.
You might have said already, how many do you normally have?
Usually subcontractors, we're like 30, 32. I've got 19 routes and I like to have two people on each route. And I usually keep a couple just as spares. I don't necessarily call them every time. And even the full contingency of, say, to make numbers easy, if I have 40 units to plow snow, if it's just a two-inch storm and it's a cleanup, I may only call half.
Yeah, that makes sense.
And then the next, say we get a next two-inch little cleanup, I'll call the other half. So I try to keep everybody happy, but in the same notion, they know that it's not everybody every single time, you know, which is, it's not worth to 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 spend. We spend a lot of money on the snow.
Yeah.
A lot of money on the snow.
I was shocked the first, when I just found the board, but yeah, those numbers, oh.
But, um, I I'm certainly not gonna pat myself on the back, but it's the crew and and even the subcontractors. By far, we're the best snow and ice operations in this state.
Yeah.
By far.
This town's amazing. This town's amazing.
We can out plow anybody any day of the week, but we spend a lot of money.
Yeah, you get you get what you pay for, right? I mean.
So it's it's what you want.
Yeah, all right. So with that, so I'll entertain a motion to amend the snowplow contract language, remove the requirement to have commercial li- uh general liability. For the twenty twenty-two plow season, right? Twenty twenty-one, twenty-two plow season.
Motion made.
May I just ask a clarifying point for us down here because we're processing the paperwork? Do we or do we not have to have commercial plates?
I mean, do is there?
I do believe when you probably for the last five years, we made that requirement.
It was on last year's thing. I know there's several on out of the twenty-one, there are some that do not have commercial plates.
They must be, I'm guessing, newer people.
Yeah, so double check them.
Yeah, I'm pretty sure that's been something we've had in play for at least.
Can we check with legal to see what they think?
Here's here's my concern with that. Um, being from the construction family, you can actually have insurance that even though you have commercial automobile liability, it won't cover snowplow. But if you have the commercial plates, it will. I think at least that's my the best understanding.
That's what I was saying.
Yeah.
It does protect you um a little bit more.
So how about this? So for those folks who apply and don't have the commercial plates, can we just give them the, you know, maybe forward them the link or whatever they have to do with the DMV? To get that snow removal commercial license?
And all that is. Normally, if you register a pickup truck, it's what, twenty-five dollars for two years?
Yeah.
With commercial, you have to register a vehicle every year. And it's, I think it's fourteen dollars a thousand. I think it was the last fifty. So.
Yeah.
An average pickup truck, say, eight thousand GBW, so you're gonna pay eight times fourteen, so a hundred twenty-some odd dollars a year you're gonna pay.
Yeah.
They'll do that to make a few thousand dollars.
That seems to make sense.
And like I said, now that that SA plate, the snow removal plate that goes from like November to May or November to April. Um, I do have contractors that have those and that's that's an option.
Okay.
So like I said, the commercial plates, I don't think is gonna be a major hangup because that's we've had that in play for at least five to eight years.
All right.
I don't wanna go backwards on that.
No, no, I would I would I would keep the commercial plates. Whether it's uh snow removal plates or just regular commercial plates, I don't think that's gonna be a major hiccup. I think the hiccup was this naming the town.
Yeah.
And and you know, that added the increase.
All right, so I think I made my motion or I I entertain the motion. Is the motion made?
Motion made.
To the second? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And then I think next year we'll um or, you know, hopefully maybe.
Summer?
Next summer, you know, get ahead a bit, we'll 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 revisit requiring the insurance, maybe increasing the insurance levels, you know, to see, we'll just talk about that, get some more, do some more research on that.
As far as the price at which it costs, so that to Chuck's point, it's on five thousand dollars more.
Yeah, exactly. So I agree with that.
Thousand bucks.
All right, Chuck, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mike, as always.
I'm not gonna object to anything, but with FYAA or whoever.
Yeah.
There's a large parcel of property down at K R R that was designated originally when we built those fields, the soccer fields.
Hmm.
Untapped.
Good to know. Let's bring that up with them. Yeah, I think the one one of the things they did mention.
Forward to the back left-hand corner when you're coming in.
Back left-hand corner. I mean, that's. I was saying, I said to Mike, I think that section that was undeveloped was ten acres. But then, of course, we we dissected that section and we put the bypass through it.
Yeah.
But that section is gonna be six or seven acres.
Yeah, I walked my dog out there before, actually.
I would think that would entertain. A couple football fields or a couple baseball fields.
Yeah.
Whatever they want us to do. I and I know, I I'm sure they're just not thinking of it for.
Yeah, I mean, one they did mention how it's convenient that, you know, the the long, long ones in the center of town, so everyone, you know, I get that, but but if. We are short on space, like.
It is that, again, when that was, I was working with Resendis when we developed that. And that was designated in the thought process to make that soccer field.
Yeah.
They went out and bought that, but it just never took off. That just never took off.
Interesting. No, that's a good good point. We'll definitely bring that up.
Thank you, Chuck.
All right. So next is discussion to vote to approve entering a lease agreement for the ambulance uh with EKG. Pumper engine fire truck and the police cruiser with the All American Investment Group. Anything particular? I mean, I I looked through the contract.
This is just procedural. This has all been approved at town meeting or not, and um Kim has clearly vetted all of this. Um, it's just a procedural thing and. And we I don't think she needed to come because it's pretty procedural and scanning.
I agree. So all with that, I'll entertain a motion to approve uh the lease agreement.
Motion made.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, moving on. So this is discussion to vote on the insurance rates for retirees. It looks like we got some recommendations on what these should be. Um, so from the insurance advisory committee. And so. So for county year twenty twenty-two, commencing on January first, twenty twenty-two, the committee voted unanimously to recommend the board's document that the new rate increase. Um, of one point three eight percent for the Medex two plan. And three point three percent for the uh managed blue for seniors two plan be approved. That's what their request is. That seems reasonable to me. Is there any uh comment or concern on this?
No.
Motion made.
All right, all right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Discussion to vote on the revised Comcast agreement for internet stations one and two. Right? Sounds like sounds like Groundhog Day. Groundhog Day. Did we talk about this?
We did, but when we had the contract signed, sent them in, they sent popped them back to us and said, oh, no, because it's governmental for fire, it's X amount cheaper for each one.
That's the best news I heard all day. I like, you know, when I hear you ended this on a nice on a nice positive note.
There you go.
All right, so with that, I'll entertain a motion to um approve, yep.
Second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
All right. Board of Health, nothing. Easy peasy.
That's the next question.
Board of Parks Commission, discussion of vote on stickers for the beach. Twenty twenty-two fees to change what locations covered stickers and how many stickers should be sold. Can we push this to a separate meeting?
Sure.
Just because it's getting late and I think that this might, you know, require a further conversation. Okay, so with that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion made. Second.
All right, all in favor?
All right.
Aye.